Joining the Land Use Committee, zoning bylaw review committee and the planning board. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, where the nation undergone individual with liberty and justice for all.
The town of Burlington will be holding the July fifteenth joint meeting of the planning board as a hybrid meeting due to the expiration of the state emergency that was issued due to the COVID nineteen virus on March twelfth, two thousand twenty.
Please note that the option for remote participation via WebEx is being provided as a courtesy to the public. This meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Can can everybody hear me on the WebEx?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. All right. So so those seeking to participate remotely, those of you that aren't already can do via Cisco WebEx at townofburlingtonwebex.com and the meeting number is one seven three two five three three six six one. The meeting password is sixteen forty-five. You can also join by phone at six one seven three one five zero seven zero four. This meeting is being broadcast on the BCAT government channel, which can be found at Comcast Channel ninety-nine, RCM fifteen and Verizon forty-one. It's also being streamed on Facebook Live and the via the BCAT Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during this hearing during the time for public comments. Questions can be asked via WebEx, WebEx chat function, Facebook Live, or by calling the planning office at seven eight one two seven oh sixteen five and by sending emails to planning@burlington.org at the meeting. All persons who ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves.
After our joint meeting concludes, we'll immediately begin the regularly scheduled planning board meeting. For the proponents' benefit, who is here representing the zoning bylaw review committee?
On WebEx, yeah.
Wait, I don't. Sorry. Who who is on who on WebEx is representing the zoning bylaw committee?
Sherry Ellis is here.
Thank you, Sharon.
Betsy Hughes is here.
Great, and.
Edward Parsons is here.
Great, thank you. And who is here representing the land use committee?
Patricia O'Brien is present.
Thank you. Let's begin. If any audience member in the hearing room wishes to speak, please come up to the table and identify yourself or online. Is there anyone?
Does that include remote people?
Yes.
Okay. There are three meetings going on right now, so I'm here for the planning board one. Can I talk or is that the wrong time?
It's so true. Yeah, sure.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you Burlington Planning Board for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stephen Myers. I own fifty-two Muller Road in Burlington since two thousand four. The reason for my attendance today is regarding the application for Tesla superchargers that Tesla and the Burlington Simon Mall had put in front of this board. I had an opportunity to read the May twenty-seventh planning board meeting minutes and it had this stated in bullet point two D. It states, four of the twelve stations allow for short-term parking as well. This one new planning board requirement, which was not part of the application, will now require thirty-three percent of the spots to be coutilized for noncharging, meaning anybody can park any type of vehicle there for any reason and utilize the spots while they shop at the mall. Based on my research, which could be incorrect, there are over five thousand seven hundred parking spots at the Burlington Mall. My question to you, why do four of these precious EV charging spots have to be made for short-term parking as well? There is a well-known term for this in the EV world and it is called icing. That is, the act of parking in a space intended for electric cars without making use of or having any need for the charger. In other words, a car with an internal combustion engine, known as an ICE vehicle, using a parking space reserved for charging electric cars. I would like you to picture this for a moment, if you would. You are on a long drive back from vacation and your car is low on battery. You have an EV, so a gas station is not an option. You look on your Tesla screen and it says Burlington, Mass. Four of the twelve stalls are open. So you pull into the Tesla supercharger at the Burlington Mall, thinking four spots are open because the Tesla app and the screens say they were open. You arrive and find zero spots open because all of these stalls were taken by gasoline cars that parked there because the sign says, quote, "short-term parking allowed." You now have to sit there for an hour waiting to charge, waiting to charge to start to charge. For the board members that own gasoline cars, how mad would you be if you pulled into the Shell station and there were four cars blocking the gas pumps because their owners are eating lunch at the restaurant next door? You may not know, but Tesla does everything possible to encourage people not to park at superchargers if they are not charging. How? Once the car's battery is full, if one continues to leave one's car plugged in, you will be charged an idle fee of one dollar per minute. Believe me, it's a huge incentive to move the vehicle so others can charge their Teslas. What the planning board is doing is the opposite of this, encouraging people to park without charging. It is true. Tesla will not police the spots, and I understand that this point was discussed at the previous meeting. But if the spots are labeled for EV active charging only, people with gas cards will generally not park there. Yes, you get some people that want to be jerks and park there anyways, but that is fundamentally different than having Burlington's planning board request that thirty-three percent of the spots be utilized by gas cars and then putting up signs stating anybody can park there. You may or may not know, but another mall in town, the Burlington Crossroads Crossroads Mall, had the same problem with their two EV chargers. The signage said, "short-term parking allowed," and it created a mess and caused all sorts of ill will and problems between gas and EV vehicles. Once the mall changed their sign to EV charging only, the problem went away. I would also be remiss if I didn't point out that on the state level, the Massachusetts State Legislature has passed a law, chapter four forty-eight of the Acts of two thousand sixteen, allowing local towns to enact fines of up to fifty dollars for parking in EV spots. My question to you, why would the Burlington Planning Board do the exact opposite and encourage short-term parking here? Summary, if the Burlington Board plans making short-term parking a requirement of the permit for the Burlington Mall, that would be a disaster. With thousands of parking spots at the mall, I really do not think that these additional four spots will make a difference to the general population shopping there, whereas it will make a huge difference to cars trying to refuel their vehicles. I highly suggest that you revisit this and change it to, quote, "only EVs that are actively charging are allowed to utilize these spots." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. You know, I appreciate your comments. I think if we do experience an issue, you know, we can go back and revisit, you know, our decision at that point in time, but it's my understanding we're not even built there yet. So, you know, we're kind of proactively trying to curb a situation that doesn't exist.
It but this this is a problem, if I may, across hundreds of Tesla chargers all over the country, and this board is doing the exact opposite. There are Tesla superchargers going in in Woburn at the Target there that are going to go live in the next couple of weeks. I assume these Burlington ones are going to go live in the next three to six months, however fast they get them up. And you are mandating that Tesla and the mall cause a problem here. And this is the board causing this problem, and it's against everything that's going on around the country with the state of Massachusetts and every other town. I you're making a huge mistake, and this is at the request of this board. Simon Mall didn't want this, nor did Tesla. It's this board that is making this what I call a ridiculous request.
Kristen, the other charging stations that are at the Burlington Mall, do they have the same requirement, short-term? Do we know?
They do not, and I've utilized them, and they're extremely slow. You have to those charge at about four to ten miles an hour. These Tesla charges charges five to six hundred miles per hour. And if you own a Tesla, and I think I think the part of the problem here is that none of the board members here own an electric vehicle. Otherwise, you would this would completely resonate.
Member Larue does, actually. It's not a Tesla. Again, you know, until I see a situation at hand, I don't know that we're really prepared to reverse our decision at this point in time. That's not to say that we wouldn't, you know, if there is, you know, a situation arises, but I'm not quite sure that there is anything that we're going to do at this point in time. I appreciate your comments. I'm glad you you came to the meeting today. Is anyone on the board? Does anyone else have anything?
I'll make a comment. Yeah, so I think what we did was we looked at where Tesla wanted to put those spots, right? They want to put them in a very prime location. So I think if if they didn't desire that prime location and there were alternate suggested that weren't in prime locations, I think we'd probably have different conditions put on that. So so there if you're at the meeting, there are a lot of discussions around that, and it was Tesla's choice to to go to that particular spot where if they had gone to other ones that were recommended, that probably wouldn't be the case of of putting that the short-term parking there with that. Was that?
Yeah, that sounds accurate. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of discussion. Thank you.
So again, you know, should we decide or should we see that there is a, you know, a negative impact due to our decision? We can come back and review the situation at hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Okay, we'll move on to matter matters of appointment. This is a public hearing, petition to rezone property to the high-rise industrial IH district, One Rounder Way, submitted by David Reinfield and Lou Freight. Who's here for the applicant? My folks can hear me?
There you go.
I'm here. I just I can't seem to unmute unmute my.
We can hear you.
Good. We can hear you. Good.
Hold on one second.
Would you please identify yourself?
Can you hear? Oh, you can hear me?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, this is David Reinfield. I'm one of the owners of three of One Rounder Way. And can you can everyone hear me? Because it says I'm muted on my screen.
We can hear you. Okay.
We can all hear you.
Okay, great. So my my partner Lou Freight may be on the phone is on the phone as well. Sorry for the connection. It doesn't seem to be working as well on my end. I am I am following up a letter that we had sent on June twenty-third to the Board of Selectmen requesting a change in our zoning to from IG to IH. And I want to first thank Elizabeth Von Venter and Brady Caldwell for sort of guiding us and directing us through presenting to this to this board or this.
You are now muted.
Thank you, Josh. Let's give him a minute or two to see if he can get back online.
Well, he's waiting. You locate Randall Road, because I don't think.
I'm bringing it up. I'm bringing it up right now. Thank you.
It's the property next to the Hilton Garden on Wheeler Blanchard Road as you go from Little Sex Turnpike down to South Bedford Street.
So what's what's the business that's there right now?
There is a building that was built, I believe, in nineteen sixty. It's the building that's way back in the highway, way back toward the highway. It was changed to Rounder Records, Rounder Way, when Rounder Records came in to occupy the space. We've approved a couple different uses so far, like CrossFit and other kind of, you know, athletic sports kind of warehouse type kind of uses. It's a very old building. The site is also in not fantastic shape. So as Liz is bringing it up, it's right against the highway. Surround there's a driveway end surrounded by wetlands on kind of both sides, has this triangle shape to it. The the property to the right of the screen is what is now under construction as the jumbo self-storage building. If you actually drive in the parking lot of Round the One Rounder Way, it's like, whoa, it's like right there at the self-storage. So it's the property lines are very close. But I don't know exactly how many square feet the building is, but it's an older building, older site. So welcome back. We're back.
Yeah, sorry.
Fill the air while you're gone.
Yeah, sorry. This is David Reinfield again. Sorry about that. I'm joining, I guess, without the without video, and that seems to work better. But I see our building. So that's a forty thousand square foot building. It's a twenty thousand square foot footprint, and it's two stories. My partner and I have owned the building, I think, since two thousand eight or two thousand nine. We bought the building from Rounder Records. We ran our businesses in this building, which we've since sold, but we have a single tenant and we are working towards repositioning this building and the entire site, really to market to life sciences and lab type of customers and tenants. So this is this is something that we've we're motivated and we're pushing and directing. And I believe that in May earlier, there was a similar presentation to the board for rezoning of certain clusters that were fairly close to our building on it was like a seventy-six Blanchard and eighty Blanchard. And if you are able to sort of zoom out from this bird's eye view, the aside from the construction project just to the to the east of us, if you continue further, that's where this B cluster is, which I understand, you know, was looking for the same treatment that we are for repositioning to the IH zoning. Our, you know, our motivation is to really to gain a tenant that is a higher creditworthy tenant that would make the building more valuable, and in turn, I feel would generate more taxable revenue for this property. And also, you know, just in terms of the the life science and biotech industry, we we are seeing a lot of activity and interest, not just in Burlington and Cambridge, but even outside of Cambridge in in the ninety-five corridor. We're working with Marcy Alvarado from Parsons, and she's helping us guide us through marketing the the building. And that's just something that we've seen really start to gain momentum over the past couple of years. So with with the May meeting and with looking at the presentation, we wanted to sort of work towards and use some of that momentum and that focus from the planning board's standpoint to put forward our recommendation or a request to consider reclassifying or rezoning our building. I, you know, I could sort of reiterate what was on that May document that was presented to this committee, but I'm sure you probably have seen that. And so I guess, you know, in in summary or in conclusion, I would like to to ask for a yes vote to grant our our building and the owners this IH designation. I understand that there's a couple steps still to come, but this is sort of one of the first steps that we as property owners wanted to take at this at this time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Reinfield. Does staff have any additional comments that they'd like to make at this time?
We don't have comments at this time. We'd just like to listen to these opening presentations and we'll certainly comment as we move along.
Great. Does any member of the planning board have any comments that they'd like to make at this time? This is the land use. Any comments from land use? Any comments from zoning bylaw review committee?
None from Sherry.
Great. This is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public have have any comments on this item? Make a motion.
Motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much. We'll see you in August.
Thank you. We'll see you in August, August nineteenth.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items one B through one E together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Item B is a public hearing, petition to rezone property to the high-rise industrial IH district, One Wall Street, submitted by the Gutierrez Company. Item C is a public hearing, petition to rezone properties to the high-rise industrial IH district, submit to Gutierrez Company. Item D is a public hearing, petition to rezone property to the high-rise industrial IH district, Ten Wall Street, submitted by the Gutierrez Company. Item E is a public hearing, petition to rezone properties to the high-rise industrial IH district, Twenty Wall Street, submitted by the Gutierrez Company. Hi.
Good evening.
Nice to see you in person.
Exciting. I'm not sure. It's it's unusual at this point. Not sure everyone's comfortable. It's great to see everybody well and present. Very exciting. I am Scott Weiss from the Gutierrez Company. Thank you for your time and attention this evening. Do you have a couple of slides that we we put together? As many of you may know, the trying to orient and see how that looks from here. As many of you know, the Gutierrez Company built several areas around the corner of Cambridge Street, Wall and Wayside. The sort of north side is Burlington Office Park, One, Wall Street, and there are several properties, including One Wall, Two Wall, Ten Wall and Twenty Wall, which, as you read through, are are part of this request to to change the zoning to, I guess, will soon be formerly known as the IH district, perhaps, depending on how that goes. But for now, talking about changing to the IH district. So these four four properties and four buildings are shown here. One Wall Street, hard to see, is on the left side of the screen, and then going from top from bottom to top, on the right side is Two Wall, Ten Wall and Twenty Wall. And if we flip to the next slide, and I'll keep this very brief, the next slide just shows you the the current zoning, which in the bluish purple, trying to match the the colors in the online zoning map, is the currently general industrial, the IG zone, and the red is the general business or BG zone today. And then just for point of reference, we'll flip to the next one. I'm getting I can't see that from here, and guessing you guys may not either. I gotta get my cheat sheet. One Wall Street is the existing office building is one hundred ninety-two thousand square feet today on six point seven eight acres with a current FAR of zero point six five. So fairly dense by town current town standards, built a long time ago in the in the eighties, and and spans across the general industrial and general business zone. Two Wall Street is the former Paparazzi, which is now the Tezmacal Jack's coal-fired pizza location, and that is one and a half acres, currently at a point one eight FAR, about a twelve thousand square foot building there. Ten Wall Street, which is a retail plaza, twenty-two thousand square feet on three acres, point one seven FAR. And Twenty Wall Street, which is a medical office building, is is two point nine acres, point four one FAR today. So as as people have talked, as you guys well know, the town has made tremendous strides in becoming a much more welcoming life science industry community, or more welcoming to the life science industry in the community. And and it's been slow. It's been delayed by a pandemic shutdown, but the efforts are taking taking hold. We, as many of you know, prior to prior to the pandemic shutdown, I think it was actually twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, excuse me, had modified our permits for an existing office building at Four Burlington Woods. And since that time, things did obviously get very quiet. And then everybody knows the life science industry has exploded during the pandemic in certain areas and certain markets, very COVID-related, very vaccine-related. The rest of the industry has been churning and growing, and there's been investment, and a lot of the hard work of this community is starting to come to fruition. I think in the last month alone, we had more tours at Four Burlington Woods for for potential tenants than we have had probably over the prior eighteen months during the pandemic. We do have, I can't say it yet, but there are there's a group that will hopefully be applying for a building permit to build out space in the building in very short order. They actually were moving forward. They actually went through an acquisition and will be growing their space in the building before they've even come forward to take space in the building. One of the one of the the keys to the industry is it is a very fast-moving industry, and that's what we've talked about. You need to have things in place. You need to be ready to go, to be responsive. And the the companies in this in these industries that are researching and developing and and then going to market and doing trials and and investigating these and developing these these medicines are constantly finding new technologies, new information, and merging and buying and modifying the the groups along the way. So there's a lot of activity and change. So one of the things at Four Burlington Woods we're also looking to do is build a a spec suite, if you will, which I'm sure you've talked about with some of the other users in town, which also helps bring some potential new companies to town and and allows it to happen quickly. So those things are happening. There's some great things that are happening at Four Burlington Woods. And as we look at what's happening at Wall Street, and how does that relate, and how does our experience elsewhere relate, there are a number of properties here that allows us to start thinking about what this future will be for Wall Street. We recognize that there's there's uncertainty around the office market, to say the least. And as we look at the One Wall Street building, the largest building that's here, that we're not looking to expand, there is a section of it that was built on the BG side that is two stories. And there's a section that's the six-story tall building in the general or IG district. The two-story section has good floor-to-floor heights. It had it. It seems ready to accept lab space, and we want to be in a position that we can be more receptive and market this building as current leases come to an end over the next six months, year, two, two to three years. And we know and we get the feeling and get the intimation that companies may be leaving and downsizing and and consolidating space. We want to be receptive and have this building be ready and positioned for life science lab-type users to come in. So as we started thinking about that, we started thinking about Wall Street and Burlington Office Park One more holistically. So as we started thinking about that, we started thinking about Wall Street and Burlington Office Park, one more holistically to think about how it could be integrated and become another cluster point within, within the town and how this comes together. And that's good. I'm glad you zoomed in on that. So we started looking at the other side of the street. Obviously, the amenities are there with the restaurant and some retail. But those are also becoming somewhat old and outdated. The, the viability, that, that retail plaza at ten Wall Street existed prior, not prior to, but during a very older generation of Burlington Crossroads Plaza and prior to Wayside Commons. So the viability of retail in this particular location is somewhat limited. We know that, that the board's granted some permits recently for users to come in and occupy some of the vacant space there. And we, we hope that that will continue. But some of the other vacant space actually becomes some very small, kind of a different type of opportunity for, the startup is not the right word, but that's the word that people think of, new companies, new co's, in terms of young companies that are just now coming out of research and maybe publicly funded or university-funded research and now starting to market and develop and wanting to commercialize their product. And so this gives them that kind of opportunity in perhaps ten wall. The existing leases in the building for, for ten wall, as well as the restaurant parcel, extend for quite some time. So is there an opportunity in the future, ten-year kind of timeframe to think about redevelopment on those parcels? Yes. But in the meantime, they'll continue, those uses will continue to serve as amenity space for the, for the facilities that are there. And then the last piece, obviously, twenty Wall Street is an existing medical office building, which sort of can help anchor a life science type of park, where perhaps you have medical office, you have places that, as offices and, and medical offices kind of transition into the future and provide opportunities to interact with the R and D lab environment a little bit more closely. It gives us the opportunity to have a more medical, R and D lab-type park, if you will, in this location. So that's the vision, if you will, for why we want to come here and change the, the, the zoning to allow for this future vision, if you will, for, for the park. And the most immediate is certainly the benefits to turnover of tenancy at one Wall Street, but then thinking holistically about the future of, of the park in general. And I know because one of the things that we've heard and I know is part of the concern is there are some properties that today have lower FARs because they are retail or restaurant-type based uses. So if you were to, and this would be the last slide, look at what the expansion potential is somewhere down the road. If everything got rebuilt and redeveloped, we could add a total of about seventy-five, seventy-six thousand square feet of space. In Burlington terms, it's not really a huge amount of space. And it would be taking what is primarily retail restaurant space, high traffic volume, high turnover, lots of cars, lots of parking and lowering the, increasing the square footage, but lowering the density and intensity of use by comparison. So just to give you that, that sort of comparison as we go forward. So that, that's why we're here. We look for your support and hope that this will help continue the, the growth and, and evolution of the Burlington office and R and D market into an office lab and R and D market. Thanks.
Thank you. Does planning staff, any, have any initial comments on this item?
Not yet. I want to reserve a little bit. But I, I will say that the exercise of going through kind of development potential, I know a member, member in Pemba who was actually absent tonight was appreciative, would be appreciative of that effort and had asked that applicants kind of look at that. And I think I, had I remembered, would have said to the one rounder waysite that to do that kind of exercise, I think would be helpful before the next meeting as well. But at this point, I'm just kind of, just as you guys sitting back and listening.
Does any, any member of the planning board have any questions? First question for staff. I know there's quite a bit of residential property behind this. I don't know if they're condos or apartments or a mixture of those. Have those people been notified?
So, well, I'll let you guys answer. Just to comment, there is a buffer. There's another property between us and the residential area.
Where? I just didn't know if, because I think this will impact them. It would, it might, it's not necessarily a negative impact, but it's an impact. And I think they'd want to know.
Yep. So the multifamily project, I, I don't know, has not been, as, as you guys know, notification is locally required at town meeting and then obviously advertisement. But butters for rezoning. A lot, a lot of times you ask, like you are now.
Yes.
So I may ask advertise. Two butters for rezonings, we can certainly advise the applicant and give them the information to do that. So there's that. And then behind, there's the Gillis property, kind of at the end of the road where next the, in that, the, my son calls it the mega, your friend with the mega tow trucks down at the end. Wind street towing at the end. And then you get the residential neighborhood behind. So there is, actually, I, when thinking about it, I thought it was a little closer than, and it was. But, but anyway, we'll take a look at what those residents.
That's the way these people enter their home. That's how they get into their neighborhood. So I think they would want to know what's going on and be informed. So I would appreciate that. Only other question was, when you come forward, because I know this is just preliminary, when you come back, you had said that you have a bigger vision for this whole big area, the, all the lots together. Will you be able to share with us and where that vision is when you come or is it still very amorphous?
So in, in terms of the vision, the idea is to make this more of a life science medical park. And so longer term, we, we, we think about the viability of the retail there. So would that be an option to reuse that building in, as I mentioned, in more of a new co, new company kind of setup? That's, that's the thought. So the visioning is really about the retenancy and reuse of the space. Could there be redevelopment in terms of knocking a building down and, and we haven't thought about that?
And then one other thing that I'd want us to maybe address when you come back before us is if you envision a change to the medical office building or a departure of that medical office building. I do think that it's utilized heavily by Burlington residents and would probably be missed if that changed. So I'm curious to know what your plan is for that specific parcel. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on, on that, you know, when we're talking about that vision, you know, as you stated, as we know, we have approved supermines for, for tenants in that area. I'd be interested in seeing kind of what those leases look like, you know? If we're rezoning, what does that do to those tenants? And, and kind of where that stands. That would be of interest to me. Iris Bale?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question out of curiosity. I know we just approved Excal for ten wall. This, what are the, the occupancy rates over there at ten wall specifically? I know that they can coexist because the first time I ever heard of Azure, before they moved to Burlington, they were in the, the, the complex of the Mighty Squirrel Brewery. And that's my first. So I know that they can coexist, like Excal could coexist with. I'm just wondering, are they sitting big in over there or are they, how, how are you doing over there?
Off the top of my head, I don't have the exact percentage. I think we have about six or seven thousand square feet vacant currently. And as you said, you know, the idea would, there, these uses can coexist. It's a, it's a little bit different type of an opportunity for a, for a lab user, for a biotech company. So it might appeal to a different group and we're trying to capture a very broad market.
Yeah, maybe that data next time around would, just die of curse. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
A question for Scott. Five Wall Street is no longer your property. Is that correct, Scott?
That is correct. That's correct. And, and the five Wall Street property also, by the way, was part of a planned development district. So it was a separate, separate zoning already.
Thank you.
Do any members of the land use committee have any questions or comments?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Zoning by law review committee?
This is Sherry. I, this is Sherry. I would like to second Barbara's request that the residents up there at Heritage at Stone Ridge be notified of this because I think, as Barbara said, this is their only way in. But I think it's of importance that they should know that, you know, something is maybe changing. So thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
I have one.
Sure.
Just one more question to staff. So if this gets rezoned, say at September Town Meeting as a IH or whatever it's known as at the time, then that makes some of the restaurant retail uses non-conforming, correct?
It does, yes.
How can you extrapolate on that? How does that, does that mess anything up? Does that make it, make it easier for them to do something we'd rather not see them do or what?
Well, since you buttoned up Section Six back in, what, two thousand and twelve?
Five members now.
Yeah. So it's pretty clear what you can and can't do in terms of non-conforming use. So the restaurants are all by special permit in there. So new restaurants, as you guys all know, need new special permits. So if these restaurant, these restaurants themselves would be grandfathered in, you know, entirely new restaurants, I think would have trouble coming in to these locations. But I, I mean, a direction that independently, completely outside of this, that Melissa Santakos and I, the Economic Development Director, is also trying to figure out if there's a way to add amenities to some of these industrial districts, as we've done in a lot of other places and PDs. No, that's not on the table for discussion right now. But just in general, if we're looking at how we're looking at news, more newer zoning districts and this being one that we've been using a little bit more and how to, what do we really want it to be holistically? We've been lucky enough to have these types of uses next to each other with other zoning. So, but, but anyway, yes, it would make the current uses non-conforming. The uses themselves now would be allowed to stay, but new uses coming in would have a tricky time getting in under a zoning district that they were not committed.
That, yes, thank you.
Yes, I want to thank you, Scott, for that presentation. It's interesting in Burlington and everywhere else, how rapidly things can change and how you want to keep yourself at the forefront and available for whatever response to make. And it happens to be medical research right now. But when I think, I spent a lot of time down there one time. Was that where the Chuck E. Cheese was?
Oh, yeah. I did too. I got a lot of tickets.
Down there all the time.
Yeah. In a costume. Big Steve-O fan.
Oh, no.
Whack-a-mole kind of guy.
The kids come. They slow me down. No, but I, I'm sure the board's going to be willing to work with you on this because it's in our interests as a town to keep a taxable base that responds to whatever the, the, the real estate needs are. So if this rezoning is going to make us more attractive to these research uses, then, you know, I'm all for it.
I, I appreciate that, that comment. And I, I will echo the, the town, you know, over the last several years has been really, really on the right page about trying to work together to keep our buildings full. And, and it, it's, it's collectively beneficial for the town's taxes, for us, for, for our operations, obviously. And the idea of keep investing and keep moving forward and rethinking how you're using space is, is an important piece. So, so I appreciate the, the, you know, the foresight that, that the board shares.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? This is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any comments on this item? They have a motion, please. Madam Chair, continue this matter to the planning board meeting of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you very much. We'll see you back in August.
Thank you.
Our last item as part of the joint meeting is a public hearing to approve zoning by law by renaming the high-rise industrial IH district. Founded by the plan of, Kristen, do you have any comments on this item?
This item was brought up by Member Covino a couple of meetings ago to look at, putting it on the, for the September Town Meeting. It's the, to rename the high-rise industrial, as you guys all know, in rewriting a lot of the IH district, the IH district's actually ten feet higher than the IG district. So where it had originally been one hundred and fifty-five feet, it's down to ninety. IG is eighty. All of that height is controlled by distance from residential, as it always has been, actually. But anyway, the, so we're looking to just rename the district to something that might be a little bit more descriptive of what the district kind of is becoming. Some of the ideas that have come up have been IG two district and innovate, which IG would be IG two, innovation science district would be an IS district, business life science, which probably would be B S L S district, commercial industrial, which got a kind of, I think, moving away from kind of more at the industrial word is something that at least we would look at. We've looked at different cities and towns and tried to figure out, is there any magic to this renaming? I've also, and I'll let Liz talk about kind of the things, the, the kind of unexciting things that she's actually found. But also talking with Melissa Santakos in terms of, you know, this whole thing, as Scott has mentioned, we're really trying to reposition, get attention and making sure that we can diversify our traditional office and create new type lab spaces at Burlington to, especially after COVID, where everyone's working at home in traditional office. So making sure that, you know, people are here, they're utilizing our buildings and they're paying rent in Burlington. So, anyway, so we've taken a lot of steps since twenty eighteen in actually making it work for these new types of uses as well as attract and provide appropriate language to fit, to fit different uses. And kind of market Burlington, that we're open and we're ready for life science and more, you know, innovative uses. And we have a lot of 3D metal printing and other type uses that are not at all life science, but, you know, new and cool and coming out of MIT lab. So, anyway, as I was saying, Melissa Santakos, she was saying, like, have we thought about as people search Burlington, are there any kind of just buzzwords that, not, you know, kind of cliche buzzwords, but things that we want to be thinking about as people are thinking, you know, Burlington and matching those. So this is not a, you know, these four options are the option, like, you know, if you guys have different things, I'm still working with Melissa. If she has some thoughts about it too. But overall, it's, does nothing to change anything about the district other than rename it. We have advertised these other rezonings to make sure that it's the IH district or subsequent name that we choose. So we'll figure all that out. So I don't have a flashy presentation. Oh, and Liz will talk about what she, she and Brady found of not super exciting names and others.
There are life science clusters in the area, you know, Cambridge there, I would assume that they would have a special zoning district. No, it's, would kind of be an IG two, IG three, very boring. Same as, you know, I, I looked at Lexington, Belrika, surrounding towns that I know have labs, Waltham, they, they, they kind of stick to a very, you know, a standardized naming system for their, for their zoning districts. You know, if that's, if that's the way we want to go or if we kind of want to use it for its, you know, attracting businesses that we want, that's kind of it.
I mean, it was like, as exciting, it was like office lab.
Yeah, it's not.
So I mean, we're, we'll still look if you guys have some, if you guys have suggestions or are reading zoning bylaws of other towns in your free time, find some interesting naming conventions. We're, we're open to it. We do need to decide, you know, before we go to print, but it's an open, open dialogue for all of you, all of land use by law review.
It would be good to probably be. It would be good to probably be, have something solid by our next meeting. Because town meeting's coming up, and we want to make sure everything's kind of solid.
Well, I'm sure it'll be hotly debated at town meeting.
But, you know, so.
So I don't know, Member Covino, you had any thoughts?
I, I, one of my suggestions was IG-2 because it relates to the IG, it's only, it's the IG district, but a little bit different. And Kristen had run, I think, when I was in the, talking to her at one time, had run something like the Innovation District.
Innovation Science is getting the most traction. But the word innovation is getting the most traction. I mean, science is.
What, what had, what had bothered me a little bit about that is if those, the high, industrial high-rise gets renamed to Innovation Science District, then the 3D printing companies, they're going to say, hey, what am I, you know, top liver type thing? But, but I just realized as, as Kristen was talking, that a lot of those are in PD development, plan their district developments. So they wouldn't get, their, their zoning district would not get renamed anyways. So maybe there is, I mean, I haven't really thought about it, but personally, maybe there is some merit in doing something like that. I just, I was just concerned about not necessarily the competition, but the guys who have been here for a long time feel like they get left behind, you know, da, da, da. You know, we're not, we're not as great as the other guy, you know, that kind. I just didn't want that appearance to happen. Kind of deserves some more thought by all of us, I'm sure.
That's the life.
I think we have to be too specific because we have some really innovative bizarre to me. No, really, I mean, that was my business working with these people. But some of the things they're doing now with, they're going to be picking sawdust and printing things, you know, I would, with that. And so that's a whole different business. But I mean, they're as far out front as you can get. And, and there are other innovative businesses that we hear about. And when you hear a gentleman sell his business in Boston for like $2 billion, and they say, well, where are you going now? He says, I'm going to Burlington. So I, I think we have to be inclusive. It's good. Let the high-rise people, I mean, the, the Met people know that, that, you know, we're welcoming them, but they're just going to fit in with, you know, the other things.
I'd like, I, I agree with what both Ernie and Paul said. I think we do need to keep it general enough that we, we don't know what the innovation of the future is going to be. It might not be science. It might be something else. I think Innovation District is broad enough and attractive to, to the people that we're trying to attract. And I think I'd, I'd like to suggest that. I'm, I'm open to other suggestions as well. But I do think we have to be careful not to get too specific because we don't know what the next innovation will be.
I agree. Thank you. Does anyone else on the board have any comments or questions? Does anyone from the Land Use Committee have any comments or questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Anyone from zoning by law review committee have any questions or comments?
This is Betsy Hughes. I, I have one comment. I just want to reinforce the fact that this is a great idea to rename it. Every time we talk about IH in terms of, at least the people in my precinct, people don't understand and they see, think high-rise, really high-rise buildings, and it's very misleading. And so I think to rename it would be a good thing to help really clarify for people what these, these districts are going to be all about. So I like the effort.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any comments on this item?
This is, this is Shari. I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is Shari. I have a comment or just a thought. I also agree that changing the name is good. I would like to suggest thinking about when companies are Googling or searching for life sciences and they know that, you know, Cambridge is a hotspot, they're going to look for the same kind of zone. So if you go with a different name that isn't really related to others, I know it's boring, but, you know, they're going to find the similar zones in different towns. And, and just like we wanted to be, you know, when they were doing the, whatever it is, the gold standard for life sciences, you know, it's that similar term. So maybe having a similar term, even though they're boring, may be worthy of discussion so that you are on that Google search or whatever they do. That's my only comment. I'm not sold on anything. So, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of August 19th, 2021.
All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to take items, IH out of order for discussion purposes.
Before you do that, do you want to just thank the group? And thank you, everyone, for attending. I look forward to continuing to work with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
You can stay, Sally.
Of course, you can stay.
Good night.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Board. We have one item being continued off this week's agenda. May I have a motion, please?
You have a motion?
I have a second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of an amendment to a subdivision planned for Redmond Street, Murray Hills and Port, the applicant.
Senator Charlie, to make a, oh, you need to.
No, no.
If you want, make a motion to continue this matter at the Planning Board meeting of August 19th, 2021, and further the Planning Board agrees to mutually extend the statutory deadline to file the decision, subdivision form S, September 9th, 2021, endorsed by the applicant on July 15th, 2021.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next up is Citizens Time. If any audience member in the hearing room wishes to speak, please come up to the table and identify yourself. For those participating remotely, please raise your hand and speak and identify yourself. Is there anyone on WebEx that you see?
I don't believe so. I think we're.
I am seeing nobody.
Great, thank you. Want to announce?
Please do.
So the Board of Appeals will have their next meeting on July 20th. Their location is to be determined. I'm not sure if they're doing it fully remote or in this room. Please check the town calendar 48 hours before the meeting to find out what that location will be. Citizens Planner Training Collaborative is hosting a workshop on drafting zoning amendments on July 21st at 6 o'clock via Zoom. If anybody, town official, you know, members of zoning by law review, Land Use wants to come, let us know, and we'll, we'll, we'll see, we'll get you registered.
So actually, you can register yourself. We just offered for zoning by law review or Land Use or Board of Appeals, or if they're interested, we can cover the cost of registration. And it just says when you register, send check, just let us know so we know. I'm going to add.
No, so you want us to register?
Yeah, you register and just don't pay, just write send check and let us know so we add you on the check. We're also trying to figure out, I think Amy Warfield also wanted to, to register, and I wanted to work with her to see if she might want to host a couple of people in the same room to watch it. I, I need to watch, I won't be able to be sitting here to do it. But if some, if, if somebody can, we can have a, a group watch of drafting zoning amendments.
So next up is the Burlington Housing Partnership Committee. It's meeting on July 22nd at 6 o'clock via WebEx. The ZBRC Sign Subcommittee is meeting on July 26th at 5:30 via Zoom. The Sculpture Park Committee will be next August 3rd at 10 o'clock at the Sculpture Park, which is between the police station and Grand Buft Farm. And Celebrate Burlington Day is actually happening, which is very exciting. It's happening on August 7th from 11 to 7, and it's going to be at the town common. Thank you.
Of course, I actually wanted to say something in regards to the, the last two items. First of all, to let everyone know that the Sculpture Park Stone Bench Project is being completed tonight. I think he's still there, probably working until it gets dark, but it probably will be finished tonight. I think they look great, and I would encourage everyone to go out there, take a look, and bring a drink and sit down and enjoy. It's really beautiful. And also, at Celebrate Burlington Day, the Sculpture Park will be having events there. We have some great events planned for children, so bring your kids. It's going to be lots of fun, exciting things for them to do. And also, at least two, possibly three of the artists are going to be on site, talking to the public, explaining their work and their process. So I think it'll be a wonderful event for everyone, and I hope lots of people come.
They'll be in the Sculpture Park or on the common?
They'll be in the Sculpture Park. We don't really have enough committee members to man two spots, so we're going to stay in the park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional announcements? We don't have any legal notices, no more any non-app approvals. Let's move on to administrative matters or none, matters of appointment. Item A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.9, fast order food establishments of the zoning bylaw provisions, 68-110 Burlington Mall Road, Laws 7, Inc., doing business as Teriyaki Madness, is applicant. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, Christine Hung of Reemer &amp; Bronstein, applying for the applicant, Seven Laws LLC, doing business as Teriyaki Madness. With me tonight, I have Tony Nazar, who is a managing partner, and Langdon Laws, the president of the applicant. We're here before you tonight on a special permit for a fast order food establishment. Teriyaki Madness is a fast casual restaurant with locations all over the country. They are excited to be opening up its very first location here, here in Burlington as its first New England location. And they are taking over the space that was vacated by Upper Cross Pizza at Burlington Mall Road, using the same space as the Upper Cross, which is approximately 1,500 square feet, same number of seating, which would be up to 30 interior seats. No exterior seats are proposed, and there will be no exterior modifications either. Their menu is a, their concept is a fresh Asian-style menu that is customized to each patron's preferences. And they're largely, largely their business is takeout and catering. And so it, I have actually menus, and it looks, it looks really good. There are no exterior parking spaces that will be assigned to this tenant, and we've received the department comments, and we have no issues with them. They are aware of the concern for odor control. And so while this operation won't be emitting a lot of odors, they will have appropriate odor mechanisms in place. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tony Nazar, who will be just giving you like a brief, you know, just to talk a little bit about the concept, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. Teriyaki Madness is basically a rice and noodle bowl concept and sauteed vegetables. I think we have about two proteins that are on the menu that you can add to the bowl concept, you know, to any of the bowl, and a few appetizers. It's a very simple concept, you know, and it's, it's the hottest Asian concept in America right now. And, you know, we chose Burlington because Burlington is a hotspot in Massachusetts, you know, for dining, you know, with everything going on all around it. But it is a great concept, and we're real excited to be here.
Thank you. Does staff have any comments regarding this application?
So same seats, food to food. We don't have any concern with the applicant going in. Just to note, since some other restaurants that just around town that, you know, you park your delivery sign in the corner, it's a very prominent corner, just to make sure your vehicles are not used as signs in the parking lot. I know we'd had a concern here previously, not from these guys. No, I, otherwise, I just would be curious, you know, why Burlington? And just kind of understand that decision because we're happy that you chose here.
Well, a lot of the hottest concepts in, in America now are coming into Burlington, whether it's Sweet Greens or Press Cafe that's across the street, and Chipotle, which is probably the hottest and, you know, the biggest in America now. So, you know, and whenever, and Blaze Pizza just opened up a couple of years ago. You know, so when you have a concentration of the hottest restaurants in America, it really brings the diners, you know, to the spot.
I think you got the headline for the night, hottest concepts in America.
Yeah.
I like it. Perfect. Thank you. No, we're all set. We have a decision ready for action this evening. Okay, so department comments, we're, we're, it looks like we're good here. Does any members of the Planning Board have any comments or questions?
When are you going to open? That's my question.
Hopefully in October sometime.
Christine, will we also put in our decision that we won't have any feather signs?
We do have the traditional no illegal signs unless permitted, or no signs unless permitted by the town.
I think we're not very clear because we have applicants.
Yeah, no feathers.
We put that on there, and then it's still out. I'm not sure.
I think we give them an opportunity to enjoy their profession like everybody else.
There's a feather, someone just stick in the ground.
Oh, temporary something.
Okay, yeah.
Right, so I think, you know, just having that conversation, you know, even if it's not clear, having that conversation now, I think, is helpful because, you know, other applicants in the recent past have not necessarily adhered to that, which can be an issue.
Location's very physical anyways, so.
Agreed, agreed. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any comments on this item?
I'm seeing nobody.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
Second.
Thank you.
Aye.
I went off somewhere. What are feather signs?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Laws 7 Incorporated for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.9, fast order food establishments of the Burlington zoning bylaw for property located at 68 to 110 Burlington Mall Road, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to Burlington.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I come to the findings, please do aye together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item B is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 12.1.5, currently 12.2.0, PD special permit of the zoning bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive, the Norblu Company is the applicant. Item C is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.1.1. Light manufacturing or processing plants of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provision, 25 Network Drive, the Norblu Company is the applicant. Item C is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.2, is engaged in experimental and testing activity included but not limited to the fields of biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, such as the regulations of the Board of Health of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive, the Norblu Company is the applicant. Item E is a continued public hearing for approval of this special permit to 1.5.3, wholesale and warehousing of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, or Drive, the Norblu Company is the applicant. Item F is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.6.7, discharges from man-made structures into the wetlands of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive, the Norblu Company is the applicant. Item G is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.7.5, accessory health club, located entirely within a commercial residential facility of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive, the Norblu Company is the applicant. Item H is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.7.19, storage of oils and fuels, petroleum products, including storage for website uses, purposes of landscaping maintenance, equipment in excess of 50 gallons of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive, the Norblu Company is the applicant. Item I is a continued discussion, application for approval of minor engineering change. Item I is a continued discussion, application for approval of minor engineering change, 15, 25, 35, 45 and 95 Network Drive, Nord Blue Company is the applicant. That's a mouthful.
There's got to be an easier way.
Get a bonus bet.
Well done.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Reiman Bernstein, Todd Fremont Smith from the Nord Blue Company. I guess I could start by saying it's different and it's nice, I guess, to be back. Maybe I'll reserve that till the end. The last time we, this has been big for the board and various town committees for quite some time. We continued the last time for a number of reasons. But the last meeting we had, there was some discussion about the interconnectivity of this project, both on the campus and in the general region. We've used this time wisely to study it and respond to some of the questions from the, from the board and some of the concepts. And I'll turn it over to Todd. I mean, apropos of what was discussed earlier, this is a very, very attractive site. We're trying, while Todd talked to it, there's a lot of interest in this property.
Good evening again, Todd Fremont Smith. I was going to talk about life science, but Scott Weiss talked about it for so long there. I'll spare you, but we are chasing life science at Network Drive as well. If you go to the slide. This is, again, this is all about team and who you bring to the team in terms of credibility. Because as a poly sci major, I'm not the life science guy that I think I am. But it is a huge part of the real estate market now and everyone, everyone is, you have to be doing it because the office market is shrinking a little bit. The lab market is growing, so we're trying to balance out and protect our assets, protect your tax base. We have the right team. So 25 Network Drive is indicated here by the star. This is the last unbuilt site at Network Drive slide. Similar to the office building we permitted before, it's this very similar orientation. It's just more of a science building instead of an office building. And I'm going a little quickly because it's the third or fourth time we've been here. So we did hear the questions and good comments about interconnectivity, pedestrian access across the site. This is a diagram showing in red all the existing sidewalks at Network Drive. It is a big campus. It's 150 acres. We went out yesterday with planning staff and conservation staff and economic development staff and we walked all around Network Drive, including through the woods. There were a lot of mosquitoes, but we made it through. We'll tell you a little bit more. So on green here, you can see at the top of, top left of the plan is one of those hiking trails, which crosses North Ave at that location. I'll show you a bigger plan in a minute. In blue are the sidewalks being proposed as part of this building. And then if you look on the outside of the Ring Road with Frank Di Pietro's help, we were able to measure the road. It looks like we could do two 11-foot drivelines and then also a three-foot share the road bicycle pathway around. 11 feet is what we have on Third Avenue, so we know it works even for trucks. And so we could sign that and stripe that and, but we do, we do think people are moving mainly within the campus. I'll show you a little bit of a slide. So this is from our site walk yesterday. This is a non-professional photo of the glade where we do concerts in the summer and just a random shot of the, the scale of the campus is so big that what's inside, what you don't see when you're driving around is, are these large lawn areas, which are with pathways to walk and people do walk around and, and we have putting greens. And we have, next slide, I think is showing community gardens, which as I said at one of our former hearings, this is one of our most popular amenities, very strange. The tenants plant the plants and then they take the plants home with them. And I think we just water them. So that's very popular. Next slide. We came upon our beekeeper. We keep honeybees on site, which is, I didn't know. It's kind of a remote, but we did such a big walk around that we found this guy actually tending to the bees, which is kind of cool. It's not someplace that you would normally go to, so it's not. But I'm told there's a Burlington bear that tries to get in, so there's a fence around this now.
There is.
An electric fence around this.
What do you do with the honey?
I don't know. I'm sorry.
I know.
I'll find out. Yeah. It's used. I think it's, whoever maintains that hive takes it away and sells it. And then of course, inside, and we will get you through the campus, Mr. Member Covino asked if we could have a tour. Campus is open now. It's become such a multi-tenant campus that if you walk up and open the door, you can walk in. I didn't even know that until we got there the other day during, you know, during, during normal business hours. But there are long, there's a lot of internal space where people move around. There's a piano there, cafe, coffee shop. If you go to the next slide, you'll see a game room. We have indoor basketball court. We just put in a $50,000 golf simulator, which is very popular. There's just a lot of stuff to do. It's like a college campus. And people do move through that spine from north to south, coming out. They'll come out of the building typically if they're going to Third Ave, right, very, very near the 25 Network Drive proposed life science building. Slide. This is just the outdoor cafe. I think you've seen this before. Slide. So we, we have thought about, and I've talked to the property managers about how people move on this campus and where they're going and what they're doing. And they do tend to move from north to south through the, through the outdoor spaces and then through the winter garden to the end of building 35. We anticipate, next slide, when we build 25 Network Drive, they will also come towards the winter garden because they want to participate in that, those amenities, but also because ultimately, next slide, people start to head down towards Third Ave. And this is actually what we see when we're out there. Third Ave is literally, you know, from, from that arrow to Third Ave is maybe two or three times around the high school track. So it's, it sounds like a long way, but on a nice day, it's, it's, it's under about a half a mile, about a 15-minute walk, 12-minute walk. And then the next slide. So what the yellow is showing is, is the pedestrian pathway. We certainly can work on improving signage to put signs up that say Third Ave, .6 miles that way. And we think that's a good idea. That third arrow is actually an organized already sidewalk that goes through those parking lots to try to collect people and take them down to Third Ave. In green, you see the pathway, which at the top of the plan, pathway, the hiking trails, which go through. There's a lot of, there are a lot of trees at Northwest Park. There's a lot of park at Northwest Park. And so when you're in these, these trails, which are now done, by the way, I didn't realize they were done. We walked them with planning staff and John, John Keely. But they're legitimate pathways. If you go to the next slide. And this just shows the North Ave connection sidewalks that go all the way from Network Drive all the way to Third Ave. We've been building those with your help over the years, Raina Kirby sidewalks. Let's go. So this just shows that, let's go to the next slide, sorry. So we have these signs that we are putting up. We need to put up more. We did put up the first one and these are the hiking trail signs. So they say hiking trail to Lifetime Fitness, .3 miles, and that's coming down from Network Drive. I do think it's a good idea. I don't know who mentioned it. It also came from Concom to amplify the signage and amplify the, the ground markings to try to encourage people to walk and to make them realize it's only, you know, .3 miles that way. Or, because otherwise people might not walk into the woods if they didn't see this hiking. And I think we have a picture of one of the trailheads. Next slide. So on the left, you see the installation of the first sign. The trails, we put this in because this was part of the Lifetime Fitness approval. We told you we'd do the first leg of it. The landscapers kept going. Those trails go all the way up to 201 Burlington Road in Bedford to the north, which we own. So we could actually have a trailhead up there in Bedford. And then they go as far south as, as my office at 71 Third Ave on the way to Wegmans. Can't get all the way to Wegmans because there are some drainage ponds along Route 3. But it's, it's, I would encourage you on a day when it's not too buggy or hot, because the bugs are out after all the rain. It's, it's, it's a legitimate, you feel like you're walking through New Hampshire. You do hear Route 3, but that can't be helped. So people have been running out here and what we'll do is I'm, I'm, I'm going to start to add more and more of these signs and we'll continue to work with the staff to try to encourage pedestrian connectivity throughout the park as, as we go forward.
Mention this to your tenants, the Huntington and the Tremont and?
I don't think we do a good enough job. So I think it's a good idea to amplify that and to put signage around where people can. Because I was, I was coming through the park about six o'clock tonight and there are a lot of people there walking. People live there now, so they're walking dogs, pushing baby prams. It's, it's, I don't usually see it after dark, especially for the past year. So it was, reminded me that it's very much alive. Wegmans is very much alive after dark, the restaurants, as you all know. So.
Security in that, on these trails?
That's a good question. So I'll defer to my attorney. I think there are laws that protect landowner, if a landowner allows you to, to walk on, on the land.
It's open to the public without charge. There's liability protection. And most of the trails could be, they're visually, there are opportunities for security to see what's going on.
But we could put signs up that say, open from dawn to dusk or something. We're happy to consider those.
I think that would be helpful. That would make me feel more comfortable.
Yeah.
No lighting, right?
Right.
No lighting. No, it's the woods. It's the woods.
You honestly don't want to encourage lighting because that gets people in there at night.
Yeah. And then if you put security cameras in there and stuff, the presumption of security is there and then it's almost more dangerous in a lot of ways. Signage, yeah, yeah.
People are being around there during the day.
They are, yeah, yeah.
Just for the record, Mr. Raymond and Mr. Covina probably remember this during the original permitting of the, the campus. The Sun campus, we used to be charged in penalty for saying that, but that was referred to as the Lamont area. And early on, when you brought back memories, if you remember when Todd started the presentation, the bridges between the buildings, those were a unique idea that we had to actually get some exemptions in the building code to do. But again, to enhance connectivity and this is now on the ground. This, people have heard me say this, good planning takes 20 years. It's been about 20 years.
That campus has really stood the test of time. The highest rents in Burlington are at Network Drive. And we, we're, we're full. We're seeing strong lab demand, life science demand. And we see tenants all the time, they go up and down Route 3 looking for a better deal and then they come to Burlington because of the amenities. They don't want to be too far away from the amenities. We do have a signed letter of intent for one half of this building already with a publicly traded life science company coming out of Kendall Square. So the mouse crop is working.
As your attorney, you're under a nondisclosure.
It is, I think the staff has an idea of who that might be, but I can't, I can't talk about it here. So, but we are moving to lease and we are hoping to start construction of this building in November. So I know there are a lot of moving parts. Bob and I aren't going anywhere. And we're hoping that you might approve, might support us tonight so we could get going on getting this project moving. As, as Scott Weiss said, these tenants are, they're in a hurry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does staff, have any comments regarding this item?
So I'd like to hear from the board a little bit. I do have, in terms of, we do have a draft decision that's not in the staff report, but that has been passed out in front of you. I do have a lot of comments to that end in terms of, just in terms of items. I guess the big ones that I'll highlight and then we can, if you want to give a little bit more in the weeds after you guys talk. But the big items, we did have a really good walk yesterday. It was hot, but it was, it was a good walk. It was, I mean, a lot of the times you just need to get on the ground to take a look at the stuff and the connections that exist. I think one of the best things that they ever did was connect North Ave and the two campuses. I mean, that was like a win-win. And then from, you know, it's like one thing and then spurs other things that are really good. And the trails, you do feel, especially the Lifetime Trail, you feel like you step 10 feet and it's like you're in a totally different place. So it is, they are really nice. They have expanded those. There's opportunity here to expand them even further to the intersection of, can you go to? You're not on.
No, I'm not.
Oh. It's the bigger, a flat plan.
Yes, I think.
Yeah, like that is fine. So some of the bigger items we talked about yesterday and that actually have been, I was reading a lot of older decisions of the Palomar decision of 15 Network back in 2008. And then with the office building in 2014 that had been previously permitted, there's a lot of discussion of the same thing about pedestrian connectivity, about a sidewalk down the roadway. So can you un, go back up? So the roadway going down a middle sex turnpike that's on the right of this screen. And there's also a gas easement that can kind of spur off that nice trail that can connect to that area as well that we talked about yesterday. I did want to have them look at, which BSC can take a look at, just the original site drive and the trip generation based on this use as well as the overall build out. Just to see if it triggered a signal warrant and or pedestrian warrant for the site drive. Because I mean, there is a fair amount of traffic. There's also a lot of traffic on Network Drive.
You also have Ken Cottage right across the street.
So there's Ken Cottage across the street. So I did want to have them relook at that if that did fit a warrant for a signal to have a signal put in. In, in looking at both pedestrian and vehicular movements. So sidewalk down the sub, and that roadway that's to the right is a subdivision roadway back in 2008. You got, in order to get 25 and 15 having separate frontage, because it was all one campus and Sun, that's a subdivision roadway and was laid out as such. We do have an approved plan. The approved plan has a sidewalk on it. From back then. Say we, there's some sidewalk improvements, the bike lane along the Ring Road, bike lane, walking along the Ring Road to stripe that and pavement market.
So Christine, when you talk sidewalk, are we talking either sidewalk or bike, bike lane or?
So I'm talking specifically sidewalk on the subdivision roadway that goes down to the Thai restaurant, White, no. Like Coconut, sidewalk there, the Ring Road stripe, stripe it as more of a bike lane type where it's pavements all flat and there's, as Todd was mentioning, the bike lane, a, a striped portion along the Ring Road and reduce the lane widths themselves. Is that correct?
Yep.
With more of a share the road, bike path, kind of whatever is, we can fit there to make it open for, and open and defined as, as that location for biking and walking.
There'd be kind of those posts that you see in kind of more urban areas for the bike paths to differentiate that so the traffic doesn't go into the bike path.
That's something that I have to.
Now, we talked about, it's a Frank Di Pietro question. We talked about paint color, maybe, different paint color. Nothing, nothing, no physical barrier, I think, yeah. That might look, you mean those plastic things that see them while, while they're safety of the? No, I understand. Yeah, no, but I don't know if there's enough room for that.
Yeah, there's, there's, sorry. There, there probably isn't enough room for a plastic barrier. What we had, what Frank had looked at was a, a shallow, so sort of a, a three-foot wide section for bikes and then a, a portion of the lane would be shared.
Sorry, for the record, who's speaking right now?
Sorry, this is.
It's Marissa Valentino at BSC.
Thank you.
The last piece, it was significant, was the, in the 15 Network Drive, the, to create the sidewalk along that edge from intersection to the North Ave.
Top left, yeah.
That's in the North Ave connection with Network Drive. So you'd have that loop and then ensure that the internal loops all created some, not the Ring Road, but the internal loops had, had, you know, paths in, in those locations. And also to mark them, so if people did want to do kind of the circuits and get out and walk, that they, there was some defined areas to, like if you want to go to walk, but if you do this five times, it's a mile. Or similar to what they had proposed in the common with the housing proposal, the circuits there, you know, just to allow people to get out and be well. You guys did just get the Fitwell score for Northwest Park, which is a really good, it's not an award, it's a designation. The first in Burlington, so for Northwest Park and hopefully we can get that up here as well. So those are the big items. Other than that, we do have, oh, and then there's a minor engineering change that anything relevant from here will be in that. The minor engineering change affects a lot of the other small pieces as we get the sidewalk network to come out of the center of the site toward these sites and so better connect them. So there's been a lot of discussion today.
All that, is all that missed?
All that is in here, yeah.
Okay, we've, Bob and I have read all this. I think Christine's right. When we walked the site physically, some of these things were pretty self-evident that it needed to be looked at. And it's a big project, so.
I, I had a question for Christine's staff. I know when we, when we permitted the Palomar building, there was talk about putting the sidewalk down to, at that time it was.
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about?
That's what I'm talking about here.
Okay, so.
That they will do that.
And they will do that and John Keely. And they will do that and John Keely was with you.
He was with us.
There were some considerations.
There appears to be physical room. We have some questions about the grade.
Right.
And, and the liability issues, which what we will make, Kristen, I don't remember the exact language, but if it's feasible, we'll do it.
Well, I, I think at that time you had determined it wasn't feasible, so it has changed.
We determined that it was or was not?
Was not.
Not.
That, that's changed.
That was how, it was shown on the plan, but the original assessment was because of the grade.
Right.
Those are cost comp issues.
Right, it's an ADA issue.
Right, and the cost comp issues.
You think you can overcome that?
We're certainly going to look at it and take a hard look at it.
Well, the biggest difference is now that they, that the subdivision has been filed and finalized back in 08 or 09, that it's a subdivision roadway. It's not a site drive.
Right.
If it's a site drive, similar that we have this conversation every single time the mall comes in front of us. A middle six turnpike down the mall drives are way too steep for an ADA accessible sidewalk, so we can't, we can't, and they can't build one. Being a subdivision roadway, having AD, you know, ADA, as long as you stick with the roadway is a little bit different. As a very different conversation in terms of what they as property owners necessarily need to meet. I think that, I think in that fact, we can, we can build the sidewalk down. But that wasn't necessarily the case when we started Palomar. It was just the site drive into the site. So that's why it's.
Is it physically the same?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is a different unit.
It's, but it's not, you know, you've been on.
It's more semantics than anything.
No, I think, the engineers who have to stamp that drawing.
Yes.
Not want to stamp that drawing.
When it was a site.
When we walked it yesterday, it physically looks like you could do it. So the great, the issue of grades and ADA liability, I think are still a little bit of an open issue. Are you willing to pay for it if we can do it? We've got a big building going up.
It's just the grade of the road itself back then, as I remember, it was also the grade off the road. So you're planning a sidewalk on the road now?
On the, on the shoulder.
On the shoulder.
Yeah.
A real sidewalk.
Flat area that already exists.
On the north edge of the road.
What changed, if I may, Madam Chair, what, what changed some of the analysis? And I think someone alluded to it earlier, maybe it was Kristen, the connection of North Ave to the site. That, that little apron, it's probably a little longer than this room.
You did that when you did Abbott, right?
Yeah, that, that's a, that's, that's actually a driveway. But it, so it connects now, that, that becomes your site access. So, and this now becomes the subdivision. So it's a road.
Which condition is that? Just so I can, is it J?
It is J, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, we can, you know, words with a little bit, but you need to make, I wanted to get at least to the point of the things that we were really. Looking at as we look at completion of this campus.
Great. And this is the language that will be, it just doesn't say it's feasible.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
It doesn't say it's feasible.
And that's what we want. We want to construct it because you throw enough money at anything.
Thank you, Randy. Is there anyone else who has questions or comments?
Paul Roth wanted to take that road straight down to the middle six turnpike. And there was a lot of discussion at that time, in other words, rather than having that sharp corner down the hill. He's, he was concerned when that was built that we leave it so there was, it could be done. You could just keep going straight down and put a traffic light down the bottom. He thought, and he thought it would take a lot of that traffic off that and people could go right down underneath in there, you know.
Just real quick.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I thought we, with this, the approval was going to just wait on the name of the company so we can kind of go through the normal process. I don't know if we're going to approve these special permits without knowing the company that's going in there. So we're going to hold off on one special permit of all, of the other special permits until we knew the name.
We did talk a little bit about that at the first meeting. And as I said, like in this, you know, in the staff report, we had to, we just wanted to make sure if you guys were. Where am I going? And the. And a place to move forward, but initially the. Special permit that I remember you guys are talking about specifically was the.
Chemicals, the chemicals.
I'm just trying to get exactly which one it is, but it was the storage of chemicals, I think, was one of the, of the ones that you were. Need to know a little bit more specific information from the tenant. And that's why when the Richmond group came, I think we were, wanted to make sure there was an understanding of kind of what was typical. To a life science building versus what's specific to the tenants. And a lot has happened since that meeting and I honestly don't remember exactly what that was, but I don't know if you guys have a little bit.
On that. On the check, right?
To, to answer that question of, you know, what is the package of a building to approve? Kind of without understanding specifically the tenant and what are those pieces?
I'm more concerned about setting precedent here that we're going to approve these special permits without the tenant, which we know. I, I mean, at the time I've been here for the past few times, not, it's not normal. So I think if we, we approve all the rest of them, they have the opportunity to go forward. The only thing that would, you'd have to come back with, with the applicants and the detail that we normally get. I think that, I think some of us at least thought that there was a level of comfort because no matter what we did. When the, when the tenant came in, they had to go to the Board of Health and get their approval.
The Board of Health.
Board of Health, excuse me, Board of Health, right. So kind of, we're kind of even by here, which I'm not necessarily all that comfortable with, to be honest with you. Because normally, I'm assuming with every other applicant, we go through that process. So maybe we, if it's, that around, maybe we just don't do that for any applicant.
What you're suggesting is that we hold off on H.
We hold off on H or we, we change kind of our policy and say, let's not do it for any, you know, special permit. Because why, if we're going to just say this. Board of Health, then like, like have a condition that we need to hold it up for. So I'm just, I'm looking for more consistency there, you know?
Madam Chair, may I?
Shouldn't take that, and what's to kind of give the green light except for that one? And then once we get the applicant, then we're getting ready. But you're, you're getting, you know, nine tenths of what I would be, nine and a half percent.
From a procedural standpoint, I don't think we're deviating. I mean, this is how it's done. In the sense that you're building a building and you're granting the authority to store chemicals. The user who comes in and occupies, that contains and engages in the operation, has to come before the board to actually engage in the use. So that's where the Board of Health, as well as at that point in time, you know who the user is. So you'll be able to approve the, whatever chemicals are.
And I believe we have to come back here.
Go back here?
For, for laboratories and.
This is to build the building and provide that this site can be used to store hazardous materials. They actually.
Why don't we just write that into the, into the, yes?
Sure, that's fine. We have no problem. They're, they're happy to come as soon as it's, they're trying to get through their first quarter without announcing.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that. If, if they're going to come back and, how does everyone else feel?
I'm just looking, continuing to get staff on that.
Can she write that into the dis? Yeah, sorry, I'm just, I'm writing. So, okay, so if we move forward, then. Prior to the start of constructing, I mean, why, so then the applicant comes in or you?
We can occupy, right? We can occupy without.
Well, then the applicant come in to verify that the.
Right.
Don't we need, don't we need a, a special permit for laboratory use?
You have, you have it here.
Yeah, I see, all right, so, okay.
But the act, the actual user will have to come before the Board of Health with a list of chemicals and what need done.
And we'll come back here too.
And they have to get a, a, a special permit for the Board of Health and we'll come back here.
Yeah.
So do you?
Actual chemicals.
Do you, so, okay.
We don't have a problem.
Yeah, so, okay, because.
It happens normally, but now we're taking.
Because this, the heating, I mean, the one that you're, we're looking at is heating and storage, and that's pretty much for your generators. That's special permit.
Meaning to construct the building and to get funding.
Chemical storage. So for chemical storage and to ensure.
The actual user will.
User compliance with the.
Submit to the board.
Permit here, you'll come in back to the board.
The actual user will submit to the board a list of hazardous materials and go.
More specifically, I'll get.
Yeah. To engage in.
Tie it back to that condition for laboratory use.
Right.
Just put something in that condition that says final approval by the board of, by the planning board.
Of the chemicals to be used by the final user.
We're fine with that.
Taking the road bill, that, when we think of, you know, chemicals and large amounts. I mean, most of these medical labs, what they call a very small quantity. In other words, they can take everything in the lab.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's where the Board of Health comes in.
Well, I can, we'll be back. Actually, Paul, I have experience in labs and things like that.
We'll, we'll be back though with the tenant.
But it depends on what.
User, depends on. That's right.
Anyone else have any more questions or comments? This is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any comments on this item? You know one. May I, may I have a motion, please?
Can I, can I just pause just for one second?
Sure.
Just want to make sure I've said what I need to say in terms of the decision. Okay, so item E is that they show that everything's met. I think this is the item that we'd probably add, what we just talked about. Oh, yeah, and then we don't have anything on transportation demand management. It's typical for almost every office type user. So that's like, you know, that you have rideshare programs and you join a TMA and you have, you know, limit trip generation. As I mentioned, I do want them to do further study on the entrance drive specifically in terms of pedestrian and vehicular. And wanting to look a little bit more on the, the net versus gross numbers of the park and people build out. Which, you know, but overall, if the warrant meets, if the, if the information meet a signal warrant, that they'll build a signal. But I just need to know a little more information on that. And that's more kind of park wide. Okay, sidewalk we talked about. Do you have all vertical granite curbing or do you have a mix of vertical and concrete?
Marissa, could you describe the curbing on the 25 Network Drive site?
Or just say, yes, there's a mix or no, there's all, it's all vertical.
Yes, vertical.
It's vertical granite. It's all vertical granite.
Okay.
Paying attention.
That was the first.
What's that?
That was the first class campus when it's like.
It's not.
There's a lot of con, I'm sorry, actually, there's a lot of concrete, a lot of concrete curbing up there too, so I think.
That's why I, I have a condition that says it should be vertical and where it needs to kind of mix.
I like that condition. I like the way you have it written.
Yeah. The bike lane, ongoing maintenance of the off, of, of the pedestrian trail plus signage on Dust Dawn. The traffic report I just talked about. Okay. Think I'm pretty good and then.
I'll provide the staff with updates on those issues.
I was revised anyway, so you can have a lot.
And then John Keely, just the, which is already in your conservation permits, but just. The complete and thorough evaluation of the existing stormwater basins. They were built quite some time ago with the original SUN. Just to make sure that they're working as they should be. We had a similar condition in the corporate drive permits, because those are also, have been built a while back. Just coordination with company.
Right, sure.
Understanding phasing, if there's phasing, just to make sure that occupied areas and non-occupied areas, there's good separation. That's, that's really it of relevance. I just want to make sure I hit on all those things before you vote it, sorry.
Thank you.
And T D O.
Are we looking to close the?
We're going to continue.
Liz has a motion prepared to state if you're looking to move forward with a motion.
I'm just going to make a motion to close.
Yeah, okay.
Close in favor.
I missed the roll pause, waiting for the roll.
Oh, yeah, faster without it.
May I have a motion, please?
Liz will read the motion.
Okay.
A motion to, make a motion to approve their request of the Norblen Company Inc. for a special permit pursuant to section 12.1.5. Currently 12.2.0 PD special permit of the Burlington zoning bylaws. And section 1.5.1 light manufacturing or processing plants. 1.5.2 laboratories and use for research, experimental and testing activities. Including but not limited to the field of biology, chemistry, electronics, and marine geology, medicine. And physics subject to the planning for making the findings set forth in section 8.3.7.4 of the medicine of the zoning bylaws. And subject to applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health. Section 1.5.3 wholesale trade and warehousing. Section 1.6.7 discharges from man-made structures into the wetlands. 1.7.5 accessory health clubs located entirely within a commercial or residential facility. And 1.7.19 storage of oils that fuels petroleum products, including storage of onsite. For onsite heating purposes and landscape maintenance equipment in excess of 50 gallons of the Northwest Park Plan Development District bylaws provisions. For property located at 25 Network Drive, subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit be attached.
As amended.
As amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you very much.
Very much. This is a big, this is a big deal for Burlington. This is really, the market's really coming here and it's, it's exciting to see. Thank you.
I have a motion, please. Liz will read it. I will read it. Make a motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for a property located at 15, 25, 35, 45 and 95. To allow for modifications to the internal circulation, parking alterations. And landscaping enhancements as reflected on the red line plan entitled.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Time and consideration and as Scott indicated earlier, this is an indication of the two plus years, or three plus years, I think. Of work that the board and the staff has done to make this an attractive destination for this technical industry.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you. Can I ask a point of what, when he pressed?
Oh, I don't know. My first day.
Don't have any minutes, correct?
No.
Okay.
We might, but I didn't, I put the dice.
Not a problem. Other matters for discussion purposes, 68 Wilmington, definitive subdivision, now looking for an extension of time. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board hereby agrees to extend the statutory time to complete the 68 Wilmington Road definitive subdivision from December 11th, 2016 to July 14th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
So.
That's forbidden.
Next week on the 22nd in the Town Hall Annex Meeting Room. Potentially at Grandview, if available and staffed, we'll, we'll circle back with the group. We'll be conducting what we're calling a planning board retreat, so. Time is it?
I think it's 6:30.
30 works for everyone?
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll send, once Brenda and I talk a little more, we'll send out a, of an agenda.
So during that time, you know, we can.
30 to 8, yes.
That's right. So we can discuss things of, you know, such as, you know, what we're looking to accomplish over, you know, the next year. You know, some of the things are actually on, on this agenda, the Airbnb, short-term rentals, illegal signage. So, you know, I think we can really get into the nitty-gritty at, at that point in time. And then. Also, we wanted to discuss the appointments to the select boards, Transportation Committee.
Jen Storn. Jen and Storn.
Jen Storn, Jen, if you guys, Jen has been really the. I don't know, I want to say the lead, but she's definitely been leading the Transportation Committee, the town, town meeting, Town Transportation Committee. The selectmen are looking to set up a transportation committee as well. Anyway, but she's been involved in a lot of those conversations and listened to the selectmen's meeting this past Monday. I think there's a little bit of how many people should be on it, or what exactly are they looking at? Um, I know the Transportation Committee, um, the previous Transportation Committee did a very good job putting together a report for Town Meeting. Um, but, uh, I don't know if Jen is on and she wants to give us like a sentence or two on the, what you understand to be the Selectment Committee agenda? Uh, you're, you're on top of it more than the rest of us.
Um, I did watch that Monday night, um, I don't know if Pat O'Brien is still with us, um, I think she's here on Webax. I, um, she was with me on the Town Meeting Transportation Committee, um, which has been, which is no longer. Um, but the selectmen have voted to approve their Transportation Committee. Um, they have, um, seven members, um, one of which will be a Planning Board member. Um, so they are asking that we, um, appoint somebody.
There any board would like to volunteer?
What, is there a, is there a scope to it?
Yeah.
We know when the meetings are.
No, I don't, Jen, did they discuss that at all at the meeting or?
No, they did not discuss when the meetings will be.
Okay, so, we'll do a little research and we'll bring that to the retreat.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, that's why I have a discussion slash appointment if, it, I wasn't sure if we had enough information to, for you guys to feel comfortable with the appointment yet. But Jen, thank you for, um, letting us know. Dig a little deeper on that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Could Jen represent the?
No problem. Uh, no, it needs to be a Planning Board member.
Got it.
We could make you an honorary.
Alright, well, like.
Hi, Jen.
The microphones are great, eh? We'll dig a little, bring that to the retreat. Uh, Liz, do you have an?
No.
Where, where's the retreat coming?
We don't know yet, TBD.
Well, it should be in a public building.
Your pod available?
I don't know.
As long as. Can I have a date for the retreat?
The 22nd.
22nd, 6:30.
That's also the same night with the Housing Partnership, what time is it?
6:30.
6:30.
Okay, uh, I'll do whatever I have to.
Um, okay, uh, Liz, do you have an update on the Northwest Park Housing Committee?
Sure, so the Northwest Park Housing Committee, just a little background, um, when 174 Middlesex Turnpike, it's a Norblum property next to Lifetime Fitness, um, was brought forth to Town Meeting. Um, they agreed to set up, um, a special, kind of unique, um, affordable housing, um, agreement with the town. Um, and part of that, um, selectmen, you know, asked the Transportation Committee to hire, um, a housing expert to, um, help us come up with terms and conditions of that. And we have that report from the, um, from the housing. Um, Judy Barrett, actually from Barrett Planning Group, she did the, uh, the report, so we have that to give to the Select Board, um, as well as kind of marketing plans and, um, and kind of how to move forward or how they should be kind of crafting this, um, MOU with Norblum and the, um, and the, the people that are going to be managing the housing. Um, so Barbara, do you have any, you are also involved, do you have any other?
Um, I think that the committee worked well and we, we sort of hand it off now to the Select Board. But what I think is important for this board to understand and is also for Town Meeting to understand, and we have asked, um, Norblum to, at some point, go back to Town Meeting and give them an update, is that, um, our original intent, as everyone will recall, is that we wanted to create this very special opportunity for Burlington seniors to have affordable housing in this great new building that Norblum was building. And that's, that's the intent, that's still the intent. But, uh, as we delved deeper and when we hired Judy Barrett, she explained to us some of the different restrictions that we had to be aware of because of fair housing. So it's just important for everyone to recognize that while it is still our goal to have most of those affordable apartments go to Burlington seniors, they probably won't all be Burlington seniors. Um, we can't completely restrict it in order, we have to abide by state law. So there will probably be other people from outside of Burlington getting some of those units. Hopefully not all of those units, um, but I, I wanted everyone to be aware of that because when we presented it to Town Meeting, we presented what our goal was, which was to have those, at the time, I think it was 43 units, um, go to Burlington seniors. It's not going to be all Burlington seniors, and we just want to be really upfront and honest about that with everyone. Um, hopefully, most of them will go to Burlington seniors, and we're going to make it as easy as possible that it does. That's what our marketing effort is going to be, so that we're really reaching out to Burlington residents and encouraging them and making it as easy as possible for them to, um, apply. But it's not going to be all Burlington seniors.
Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate it. Um, the Housing Partnership, uh, Ernie, do you have an update for us on that?
Uh, well, uh, I'm not sure what my update consists of.
So.
Last meeting, so I can.
Uh, no, no, I just, I was hoping, Ernie, you could, um, tell us a little bit about what you guys have submitted for, um, September Town Meeting in the Affordable Housing Trust, that was kind of namely.
Uh, we're, we're looking, uh, to get, uh, probably M A P C or, or some, um, affiliate of M A P C to do an Affordable Housing Trust, uh, Affordable Housing Assessment, excuse me. Uh, this would be completely, this would be outside, this would be as objective as possible. That, that would be my point anyways, and I think everybody on the, on the trust, because, uh, so there's a need for senior housing. Who says so? Okay, so, I mean, you know, there's a need, there's a need for startup housing, who said so? I mean, who, is there, is there, or are these anecdotes type things, you know? Everybody knows, but we don't have. Yeah, everybody knows, but we, but we don't have the hard numbers. So, so we're looking for a group that does this all the time, uh, and to do it, do it for Burlington. Uh, obviously using some data that's, that already exists, because there's no sense in doing it twice, but, but, uh, doing it from, from the ground up, uh, type thing. Well, we want, want to go to Town Meeting in September looking for authority money to do so, uh, with the, with the intention of actually taking the money from maybe the affordable, there, there's almost a million dollars sitting in affordable housing money. Uh, some of it from the reserve, 600,000 from the reserve at Corporate Drive, uh, and other little chunks that, that keep accumulating. And on that, on that same, on that same note, we're, we're also looking for, to establish what they call a municipal housing trust, which would control how that money would be spent, which, you know, be, in other words, Town Meeting would vote to approve to, to set it up and like the composition of it and that kind of thing. So we can get, you know, the money's there, we should.
And start using it.
Yeah, we should be using it and we should, and, and especially if the, uh, if the CPA, they communicate, the Community Preservation, uh, Preservation Act. Uh, it comes into existence hopefully next May, I think Larry Cohen and, uh, John Tex, I think, have been spearheading it and, and they put it off because of COVID. And so that could generate some more money. So, I mean, there's, there's, you know, we've been talking about it for 30 years and really, I mean, we did do some things, uh, such as South Bedford Street, the old military housing, uh, the planning was very instrumental in, in getting that and putting it together. So it looks, it looks good, there's, there's some people very interested on the committee now, and it's, and it's, uh, it's moving forward.
Thank you, Ernie. Barbara, I hate to put you on the spot, we, we already talked about sculpture, but if you have anything else at that.
I do. I actually do have other things. There's a lot going on. I already talked about the benches, already talked about, um, celebrate Burlington Day. In addition to that, um, another exciting piece of news is that the Sculpture Park Committee was approached by a Burlington resident who wants to donate a sculpture. So we're going to be having a new sculpture come into the park. If you go by, you'll see a little area with yellow tape that's marked off. That's for the, um, DPW, because they're going to come in and pour another concrete pad. And hopefully, the new sculpture will be ready and installed shortly before Celebrate Burlington Day. And we're going to put a big tarp over it and have a grand unveiling, um, on Celebrate Burlington Day, if the sculpture sculptor gets it done in time. So there is an if in there, if not, we'll just do the big event another time. But it's very exciting because it's, um, we're hoping, it wasn't something we thought of. We were approached by a Burlington resident and it's, it's such a wonderful thing and the Select Board approved it. And we're hoping that maybe other Burlington residents or businesses even may decide that they want to commission sculptures in the future because, um, then we don't have to pay for them, and they're permanent, and it's a wonderful thing for both the family and for the town. Um, the only other thing is that, um, we need to appoint a new member, and since the Burlington Sculpture Park Committee is a committee of the Planning Board, we need to appoint a new member. Paul Raymond was serving as our Recreation Department member, but he has stepped down and we have, uh, David Norden has agreed to take on the position, so we need to officially appoint him.
Um, I don't have any. Congratulations, is there anyone else?
Well, then I would like to make a motion that the board approved the appointment of David Norden to the Burlington Sculpture Park Committee.
So how do you spell his last name?
N O R D E N.
As expected, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here on Recreation, if I can.
Sure.
Yep, so that, that's, uh, uh, I thank Paul Ray for all his years as, uh, Recreation, uh, Commissioner from the Planning Board. Uh, just an update from them, um, the, there's a walkway they put in at Simon's Park, uh, that goes, basically goes to the pool and the, uh, to the building that ADA, uh, approved, so that's now complete. And there's going to be a ribbon cutting, uh, at the Recreation Maintenance Building up there on, um, yeah, what's that, Meadow, Meadow.
It looks creepy.
And that's, uh, July 26th at 9:00 AM.
Terrific.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
It looks so good.
I.
Doesn't it look nice?
Looks really nice, yes.
Uh, yeah, the Recreation is also, or maybe it's, um, another town, a town group, but, uh, the fencing over at Rohannes Park is looking really nice as, as a child who went to that park quite a bit, that fence.
In the paving.
Everything was great, it looks wonderful, they're doing a wonderful job.
Yep.
Um, next up, uh, we have Airbnbs and other short-term rentals. You know, I, I do think this is definitely an, uh, an agenda item for our retreat. Um, you know, I don't know if there's anything we want to say about it now, if we want to table it until that time. Um, same thing with the illegal signage, you know, feather signs and such. Uh, I definitely think it's, it's a point of conversation for, for the retreat as well. Um, so, yeah, if we can kind of think about what we're seeing, those properties that, you know, are, um, defending parties, so to say. Um, you know, maybe we could talk about that at that point in time. Um, I don't see any correspondence, uh, reports from chat, sure.
Uh, could I ask, uh, the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee has a representative from Planning and at this time, I am that representative.
Sure.
I would like to continue, I think it's an annual appointment by.
No. Oh, I wasn't aware of that, that it, so that it's.
Sure, I'm, yeah, I'm pretty sure that's how it happened, wasn't it Barbara, did you appoint me? Or did I just do it, uh?
Well, I would like to dominate you.
Well, no, it's, it's not a vote of the board.
No, I think I did appoint you.
I just wanted to do it out in the open, I didn't want to sneak over and say.
Yes, you can.
The chair has the authority.
I understand.
To, to, well, point subcommittees and so forth, and there was some controversy about a subcommittee I was on, so I became chair and appointed myself.
Okay, well, you are now appointed.
Thank you very much, Madam.
Okay, we do not have any subcommittee reports, we do not have any unfinished, we do not have unfinished business or new business. May I have a motion please? Oh, sorry, we do.
I know, I know, uh, but we're not all kind of magic time that you can like put down in the book I got, but I don't.
No, there's just no magic.
I, I know, I just wanted to.
Quick times every week.
I want to say.
Um, just with the retreat, um, the things I want to have you guys just put in your brain, um, like when you, what are you concerned about? What are priorities for us? Um, what are priorities, just what about the town and how things are going, like what, what, I mean, I know we've heard a lot about, um, residential housing construction, I mean, like everywhere. Um, but just think about those type of things and what we're, what we're going to reach out to you guys and just try to get a little feedback so we can start with something to start working with. Um, so we can, yeah, just, anyway, so.
Throw something.
Yeah.
6:30, but we'll send out an invite.
Seven.
We can, I, I don't.
Everybody who.
Not that we have the power to.
Is it getting to a 7 o'clock start time?
No.
Okay.
No.
Over the retreat.
Yep, oh, 7, okay.
That'll give me to do the.
Absolutely. 7, so 7 to 30.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, okay, now, go ahead, sorry.
May I have a motion please? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Really? Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.